I now call the, um, it's Monday, July the 27th, 2020, and I now call the Wintonwood City School Board of Education to order. Can you please join me within the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
To the republic.
For which it stands.
Which stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty.
And justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you. As you can see, our meeting this evening is still being conducted via Zoom. And we had a late start due to some power outages right at the start of our meeting, as well as some bad internet connections and our vice president, Mrs. Ruggles, is still working to get connected. But we will move on and Mrs. Hobbs is working with her at this point. There are two recognitions on our agenda for today. And for under 2.01, which is the district honors, recognitions, and gifts and introductions. The first is the Marge and Charles J. Shot Foundation. And they donated $10,000 to Wintonwood City Schools to be used to support district events. The Board of Education thanks the foundation for its extreme generosity. We wanted to recognize them for having given us that very generous donation. The other recognition that we would like to recognize tonight is the Ameritas Life Insurance Company. They donated $300 to the Wintonwood City Schools. And the Wintonwoods Board of Education would like to thank Ameritas for their generous support and for the community support that they always give us. It is our intention to be as thorough as possible in these Board of Education proceedings. However, we will forego the recess that is listed at 3.01. And the, along with the public comments, which is 4.0 at this time due to the format of this meeting. And we will direct our attention to Board Policy 0169.10 regarding the public participation in board meetings. Having said that, we will now move on to Agenda Item 5.01, which is comments from the Wintonwoods Teachers Association. And we have a representative from the Wintonwoods Teachers Association, Mrs. Baker. You have the floor.
Thank you. So WWTA would like to thank the Board for the chance to say a few words. We know that the decision to open schools is not an easy one. This has been a stressful time for all of our community, students, families, teachers, administrators, and support staff. We would like to be back with our kids and teaching as normally as possible as soon as possible. Rest assured that teachers have used this COVID time to work on some computer skills that many of us thought we would never have to use. We know that working remotely with our students will be much more rigorous this time around. We also know that we are going to have to be more rigorous if we are in person also. That being said, we are worried, not just for ourselves, but for our students, families, and coworkers. The leadership of WWTA has surveyed our members and fully two-thirds are not comfortable with being back in our buildings with our students. We are concerned with the ability to observe all the safety protocols necessary to protect all the members of our learning community. We know that it is not going to be education as usual when we do go back, no matter what format it is in. While we will abide by whichever option you choose, we strongly encourage you to vote for the safety of the entire community and vote for beginning the school year with distance learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker, for that information from the WWTA and the voice of our population, two-thirds of the population of our teachers. Moving on to the next agenda item is 5.02, the Association of Public School Employees. And I thought I seen, yes, I do. I see Mrs. Ferguson-Gordon on the line. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Vice President, Superintendent Smith, Wintonwood OC would like to say thank you for acknowledging us tonight. And we also had concerns about coming back to the school, supporting our teachers and staff. We submitted questions to Ms. Wilson and Ms. Superintendent Smith. And we would like to know. We would like to know that submitted questions would be answered as soon as possible, excuse me, as soon as possible for our members to make the best choice for their families. Again, thank you for acknowledging OC tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferguson-Gordon. Mr. Smith and Mrs. Wilson, if you have those questions, I'm certain that you all are working on a response to the OC community, as well as hearing the voice of our, of our teachers. Mr. Smith or Mrs. Wilson, would either one of you like to address any of this at this time?
Well, Dr. Johnson and Board, seeing that we got, we received the questions today. I think the questions were very thought-provoking. I think the OC members have been very, very supportive of the work that we've done from all angles. They have been very, very involved, very, very committed to the work about educating our kids at Wintonwood City School District. And as we begin to process questions, process those questions that they've asked, I've seen just the first preliminary part of the questions. They are all very, very thorough and they all point to the direction of how to best serve our children as well as our staff. So we will get back with them within the next few days. But again, thank you, Ms. Gordon and OC, for your real thought, your heartfelt questions about how this district operates. And it's, I am very, very proud to be part of your team.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that response. And so it sounds like they have, they have given it some, they've looked at them and they're going to be working on getting you some answers, you know, as soon as possible. So thank both to the WWTA and to OC for joining us tonight. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to these minutes, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruggles, I don't know if she was able to join yet or not.
I don't, I see her name, but it says connecting to audio, so she still may be connected. So just kind of move on.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes, she was there and then she's gone, so it passes unanimously. Well, we'll just do a four to one, just because she wasn't able to vote. Okay. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, which is the Treasurer's Report for the Financial Statement for June 2020. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Oh, yes, we finished the year in the general fund. Our year-to-date revenues were 49.9 million. Even with the $551,000 reduction from the state, our expenditures for the year were 51.7 million, which was only 8.2 tenths percent increase over the prior year. We ended FY '20 school year with about a $5.3 million savings under budget. And I shared with you at the work session, some of those areas where we saved some funds due to the, to distance learning. One of those major areas, if you recall, was substitutes and some of our contracted services for various services for maintenance, transportation, et cetera. So our general fund cash balance decreased for the year by 1.2 million. We ended the year with approximately 53 million, 16.7 in the general fund, 5 million left in the building fund, and 26 left in the class, 26 million left in classroom facilities. As you might expect, as you drive by and look at the buildings, those funds are going down, the funds on hand. I don't know if you have any questions, but that's the summary of the financial report.
Are there any questions, Board? Okay, seeing none, with no objections being heard, we'll let the financial statements for the month of June 2020 be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, which is the Treasurer's Recommendation of Investments for June 2020. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Uh, yes, for the month of June, we had approximately $53 million investments. We earned $127,000 in interest, $26,000 for the general fund, and a little over $100,000 for the building fund. Our total investments for the year totaled $1.8 million, of which $460,000 was for the general fund and the classroom facilities was approximately $1.3 million for the year. That would be it for the investment report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, are there any questions for Mr. Seymour at this time? Well, let's take a motion first. Would someone make a motion to accept the Treasurer's Recommendation for the investments for 2020?
I'll make a recommendation to accept the Treasurer's Recommendations for Investments for 2020.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you then call that vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Birdy?
Yes.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
I'm, I'm on now.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you're able to join us, Mrs. Ruggles.
Well, just so you know, it's a little spotty, so I'm going in and out, so phone and everything.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for working with that. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, which is the reports for the superintendent, school reports. Mr. Smith, Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Dr. Johnson, Board, there's a comprehensive list of school reports and events that are taking place. These are listed in the event that we are virtual or not. But we needed to keep a comprehensive calendar, no matter what. So the first event starts as August 4th, which would be the college application boot camp for seniors. And then, of course, are on the August 5th, 6th, and 7th would be our preschool kindergarten listed alphabetically. And we have the convocation that began August 10th. And we are not sure if we're going to be virtual or not with this experience. But if you guys can see, I don't want to take time to read every one of these off to you. But these are designed to be virtual or in person. So we had to make sure that the calendar was comprehensive enough that the Board knew what activities were going to take shape, regardless of what selection of school opening is voted on.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. One question I do have, what is it going to look like for the, yeah, I know like our, usually our preschool jump-off, the jumpstart, you know, usually is, you know, like a, a, kind of a welcoming environment. What is that going to look like? Like a link is going to be sent out to all the parents and they can log into Zoom and have a meeting? Is that why you're going to do that?
We are waiting to hear the Board's response to the opening or virtual. And so that actually is tied in to that conversation. We're flexible. We have several options available. But it's very important that our parents get a lunch of what's going to happen with their kindergarten kids since they're sort of like the first group. So we'll actually have a comprehensive package for the Board to review, as well as the community, so they know exactly where they stand. Teaching and learning, along with our community engagement coordinator, Mrs. Denny, are actually working out the details.
Okay, thank you. That's, that makes sense. Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is 9.02, which is the Certification of Standards Governing Types of Food and Beverages Sold on School Premises. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, here's the, the subject Certification of Standards Governing Foods, Types of Foods and Beverages Sold on School Premises Report 2019 to 2020. As required by Ohio Revised Code 3313.814 pursuant to Wintonwood City Schools Board of Education Policies 858510, all public schools must meet certain nutrition standards on all foods sold on school premises during the school day. This affects the Child Nutrition Department, as well as all vending on school premises and any stores. Under the Ohio statute, the school day is further defined as the period of time from midnight through 30 minutes after the end of the regular scheduled school day each day school is in session. We are pleased to report that the Child Nutrition Department has continued to meet these guidelines and requirements the school year. Further per Board policy, all of the à la carte food items sold in the lunchrooms meet or exceed the guidelines established by the Alliance for a Healthier Generation, and all beverages meet the Ohio requirements and guidelines. School principals are responsible for overseeing the use of vending machines, school stores, and fundraisers in their respective buildings. We can report that our schools are also in compliance with applicable requirements. So a kudos to Mark Doctor and his team, Supervisor Mr. Denny, and all of the administrators in the building, that no matter what fundraisers they were having, it met all the child nutrition guidelines for the state. And that's a big, big undertaking. So kudos, bravo, excellent work.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, again, this is an informational update and the Board does appreciate receiving this information. In addition, the Board appreciates, like what Superintendent Smith said, Mr. Doctor and the food service staff for all that they have done to serve nutritious meals to students in the district during the months of March through June, and also when, while schools were under quarantine, or we were all in quarantine, and also through the summer months with the nutrition is the mission bus, you know, still going around. So the Board does truly appreciate all that you do to contribute to maintaining healthy eating standards for our students in the district. So just to echo Mr. Smith's, kudos to the food service group. The next item on the agenda is 9.03. And Board, there is a need for an executive session, so therefore I will entertain a motion to go into executive session at this time.
I'll make a recommendation to go into an executive session. Okay, I'll make a motion to go into an executive session.
Uh, you gotta state the reason.
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the sale and this is this disposition of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit for use property.
Thank you. It's been motioned. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. We will now be prepared to move into a private Zoom room meeting for our executive session. We will return for active regular Board of Education meeting when the executive session is complete. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote? Oh, he's on mute. Mr. Smith, you and Mr. Seymour are still on mute.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Bird?
Oh, present.
Mr. Birdy?
Present.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Thank you.
This is unusual circumstance. We understand. All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is 9.04, which is the Facilities Update. Superintendent, along with Mr. Denny, our Executive Director of Business Affairs, will have the floor at this time.
Mr. Denny, you ready?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mr. Smith. And good evening, Board. Really appreciate the opportunity to be able to give an update. And before we launch into some of the substance of the report, just would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that anyone that has access to the web can access our website at www.wintonwoods.org and get a wealth of information by going to the bottom of the homepage. I believe it's the bottom right and clicking on construction updates. And at that point, you can get access to the Weekly Blitz, which is a weekly publication that the district generates in cooperation with our construction management firm, Skanska Megan. And that is a great place to see what's going on that week. There's also a lot of other information on that page that might be of interest to anyone that's looking for more information about the construction project. So a lot going on this week. I'm, again, pleased, first and foremost, to be able to report to all of our community, our stakeholders, our Board, our staff, administration teachers, everyone, parents, students, that the buildings continue to run on schedule. They continue to run on budget or within our contingency funds. And the project continues to move, so we're thrilled about that. They're really taking shape. Much of the exterior construction of the building itself is nearing completion. Masonry is over 90% complete. Roofing is, the buildings are actually almost entirely all roofed in, so roofing is over 90% complete. Actually tying in downspouts into the storm utilities and storm systems now. So that's a big step in making sure the building stays warm, safe, dry, and cool, and humidity controlled, which really helps the project move along. The HVAC systems are fired up. And there's just a lot of progress going on inside the buildings. Intemissive painting of columns in the administration wings, which is part of the fireproofing system, continues. Got a chance to see a resinous flooring installation, which is one of the, in this case, it was a staff restroom. Looked really, really good. It's a very attractive floor covering, very durable, easy to clean, and looks great. So just a lot of great things going on. Lighting is, complete installation in the middle school gym at the 712 building and is about halfway done at the arena, the high school arena at the same building. Lighting installation is complete in both gyms at the K6 building, the open gym, as well as the large enclosed gym. So just a lot going on, ceiling tile going in now, because a lot of the cabling is complete, plumbing is complete, the hydrostatic, hydronic lines, excuse me, are complete. And construction going on in the interior courtyard, you can't really see from, from the street or from outside, but the large exterior, interior courtyard at the K6 is really coming along nicely. And they're starting to put in sidewalks and, and ground features there. So that's a quick update. There's a lot more going on probably than I could capture in just a short update. We just wanted to provide some information. Happy to take any questions or comments that might come up at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Board, are there any questions for Mr. Denny at this time? Any reactions? I would like to say, Mr. Denny, this is an informational update, as we all know. But the Board really appreciates receiving the information that you did send, that virtual tour that you sent to us. We were supposed to take a tour and, you know, the building, the school district got shut down again. And so they, we really would like to thank you and the team of people who assisted you in putting that together. I found it very informative. And it was a lot more complete than I think I realized, you know, with the pictures of the inside and, and everything. And I know before, when I was looking and you would point to things and I'm like, I don't see it yet, but okay, you know, this is going to be a stairwell, you know. But I just appreciate the virtual tour of the building, of both of the buildings, and it was very thorough. And it was exciting to see those, the building progress, you know, because I could see, I went, I had to pull out all my old pictures because I kept them in a binder every time you would give them to us. So I went back and I'm looking like, ah, there that is, there that is. So it was nice to see. I appreciated. I'm sure the other Board members did as well. So just wanted to say that.
I do have a question of Mr. Denny.
Please.
The HVAC is quite modern. Is it adjustable as needed by the new guidelines?
Yeah, if you're talking about some of the CDC and Health Department guidelines, Dr. Coupalletti, like with regard to countermeasures for viral.
Yes.
Yeah, viral control. So what I would say is yes, but not as is right now. I mean, it's, it's a quantum leap forward compared to anything we have right now. But when you look at the types of equipment to really, I'd say, provide the, the most safe mitigations, the best countermeasures, you're looking at things like ultraviolet light treatment or probably more practically and less expensive, I think what they call bipolar point ionization. And that, you know, charges particles to help those cling together. What we're going to see, I think, low-hanging fruit, and it has to be balanced by the engineering, is the ability to put in much more dense filters where you can have higher MERV ratings. Just for folks who might not be familiar with that, and Dr. Coupalletti, I know you are, and Superintendent Smith, and probably us other folks on this particular call. But they go from one to 16, and the larger the MERV rating, the, the more intense the filtration. The smaller the particles can be filtered out. So this virus is recommended to be a MERV 13 rating. So I think we could probably get to, if not that close to it, which is going to predict, you know, be able to filter out a lot of the particulates that the virus can hitchhike on. And then we can even look at HEPA filters, but it has to be balanced against the power of the motors because the filters, as they get thicker, can shut down the actual circulation of the system itself. So there's a lot of balancing that has to go on. But what's nice about the new buildings is it's a wonderful platform to be able to take those next steps and, and look for that type of almost hospital-grade mitigations against, against very, very, very small particles like a virus. So.
Thank, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Denny, the current buildings that we're in, as far as to the, the idea is to capture more dense particles in those buildings as it relates to the filtration system. Do our buildings have the capacity to be modified in the event that the Board chooses to have some experience where kids are coming back to school? Or there are no chances to modify based on the age?
That's a great question, Mr. Smith. And Dr. Coob's question's a great one as well. That's, it depends on the system. So I'll just give you a quick cross-section without chewing too much of your valuable time. There are 27 air handlers across the district. So we've got nine facilities, excuse me, 11 facilities, about 660,000 square feet that were built across anywhere from 1937 up into the 60s and 70s, certain parts of them even, you know, later than that. So you've got a wide variety of types of systems. They all have different potential upgrades, different potential capacities to handle more intense filtration. We, I tend to think we run around a MERV seven or eight right now, just typical air handlers. What we're doing is working with a business partner right now to assess and evaluate and bring in professional engineers so we can see what the system can sustain without breakdown, how thick filters can we put in. So we're working on that. We've also got 28 rooftop units. We've got, I think, six side mount units for trailers. And we've got a variety of probably almost 200 window units. Those are not nearly the same robust capacity. You're really looking at what I would call very frequent filter washing to ensure that you're doing the best you can to filter out those, those particulates that you can access. So I know it's not the simplest answer in the world, Mr. Smith, and I apologize for that, but it's kind of all over the place.
Yeah, very good answer because the buildings were not designed and built at the same time, nor were they ever designed to filter out whatever, however COVID gets into systems. It was never designed for that. I just wanted to know if there was a filtration system that other districts may use because many districts are not fortunate to be building new buildings. Is there going to be something that could be modified across the state that can keep all of the children safe in every district, no matter where they are?
Absolutely. That's what we're. Absolutely. That's what we're exploring, and I know other districts are as well. And everyone's trying to do the best they can to provide the best environment for the staff and the students. And it's our responsibility so that, look for more information on that. We're certainly digging deeply into it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. The next item on our agenda is 10.01, which is the superintendent's recommendations for the approval of classified salary schedules. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. The recommendation is for the board to approve the salary schedules. OPEC Chapter number 271 has tentatively agreed to forego the 2.75% previously negotiated that began July 1st, 2020. The salary schedules presented include no raise for all classified employees. The board must adopt these schedules to replace the schedules previously approved in the negotiated settlement. This will supersede the previously approved 6% reduction.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, are there, a motion would be in order at this time, and then we could ask any questions that we might have?
And Board, I just want you to let you know the OPEC representatives did ratify this agreement.
Okay, thank you. A motion would be in order?
I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the salary schedules as presented for classified employees. OPEC Chapter number 271 has tentatively agreed to forego the 2.75 previously negotiated to begin July 1st, 2020. The salary schedules presented include no raise for all classified employees. The board must adopt these schedules to place the schedules previously approved in negotiated settlement. This will supersede the previously approved 6% reduction.
Thank you. It's been motioned. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions, Board, at this time?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to thank the OPEC representatives and the membership for their, their flexibility in being agreeable to what was presented to them given our, these unprecedented times. We really appreciate your willingness to forego certain things for the betterment of the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruggles. Anyone else?
Ms. Wilson, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else you need to add to this agreement so the board will have a full comprehensive view, or it was thorough enough?
I believe it was thorough enough, but just as Mrs. Ruggles pointed out, OPEC was very cooperative and seemed to keep student needs at the forefront of the entire negotiation process. And that was under the leadership of Shonda Ferguson Gordon. I applaud her, though.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for those comments. With no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. McAllan?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Letty?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.02, the approval of teachers and certified salary schedules. Mr. Smith, back to you.
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to add a footnote to this recommended action before I read the recommendation. At this time, the teachers are still working on ratifying this agreement. They have not ratified this agreement, so I wanted the board to be aware. So the board will need to approve the salary schedules as presented for teacher and other certified employees. WWTA has tentatively agreed to forego the 2.0 previously negotiated to begin July 1st, 2020. Salary schedules presented include no raise for all teachers and other certified employees. The board must adopt these schedules to replace the schedules previously approved in the negotiated settlement. This will supersede the previously approved 6% reduction.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order. All of the documents that, Mrs. Baker, Speaker, not, is off, but a motion would be in order at this time. You have the documents in front of you, the salary schedules for the teachers?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the salary schedules as presented for the teachers and other certified employees. WTA has tentatively agreed to forego the 2% negotiated raise to begin July 1st and that the salary schedules presented will include no raise for all teachers and other certified employees. And this will supersede the previously approved 6% decrease.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Okay, Board, since there are no questions for discussion at this time, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. McAllan?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes, the tentative teachers' agreement passes, schedules pass unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.03, which is personnel schedules. Mr. Smith, back to you.
Yeah, Madam President and Board, the recommendation is to approve the personnel schedules as presented. Schedule A, resignations. Schedule B, personnel employment, certificated staff. Schedule C, personnel employment, support staff. Schedule D, employment, certificated and classified, which includes extra duty assignments. And Schedule E is leaves.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order to approve schedules A, B, C, D, and E?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel schedule as presented.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion at this time? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. McAllan?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.04, which is the plans for reopening schools. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. There are three plans that we sent a draft to you two weeks ago, and then we sent a final version of it with some modifications based on the board's recommendation. And the plans are not necessarily in this order, but this is the order that I'm giving you. Basically, it's the original, which would mean that students report to school as scheduled along with staff. The other plan would be a blended learning version. It could be a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. It could be used as a cleaning day. It could be a Thursday, Friday, where other students report. And then finally, it would be a virtual experience where students would not report. And I believe that Ms. Baker said something very, very important. It would not be the virtual experience that was just kind of launched upon us. It would be something more robust and more, more intense, where students could really benefit from a virtual experience while they have their Chromebooks working through Echo. The other part of that, that I think is very, very important, the three plans are there so that we could figure out what's best for our educational community, what's best for our staff. But in the event that the virtual experience is selected, the Teachers Association, it may not have just been the Teachers Association. I think it was a staff survey. It came out 82.5%, I believe, that if there is a virtual experience, they believe that that virtual experience would be enhanced better if the staff reported as opposed to remaining at their residence or wherever else they would be. So this just gives you just some of the footprint of what we started. And we wanted to make sure that the board had a comprehensive plan for all three. A lot of districts have already issued some of their conversations about where we are. And I just wanted the board to be aware that there were three plans put in front of you so that you will be able to make a education, educational decision of what's best for our children. This is a difficult situation simply because with the onset of COVID, it changes every other day. One day you're in the red, and we hope that we never get to the purple. And we hoping, we hope that this thing diminishes along the way, but we still are in a position where we have to educate our children to the best of our ability. And so that is to, that's all of my comments, Dr. Johnson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order to decide which one of these three options we would like to vote on to adopt for the reopening of schools. To, we need to approve one of these three plans. The blended plan, the full school, full-time reentry into school, or the virtual plan. And just to consider what Mrs. Baker has said with respects to two-thirds of the teachers not feeling comfortable. So a motion would be in order.
I'd make a motion that we consider the virtual plan for the first go-around.
Can you be more specific? First go-around as?
The first, the first try that we do. And if things get better, then we can move to the blended or the full-time.
Just to be aware, Board, the recommendation is to approve the plans for reopening school. Once you guys believe that these plans are solid, then I think you go into your conversation on which one you would prefer.
So we're just voting today to re, to approve the plan for reopening schools?
It's the plans, and then you, your decision about which one you think.
So I'll, I'll modify my motion that we approve the plans as presented. Yes.
Okay.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion at this time? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that?
It's virtual.
Well.
No, it's the plans.
Just the plans. We've got three plans yet. So I thought we were voting on one of the three plans, but that's not what I just heard.
Yeah, plan being plural, meaning do, do we think? Because here's the other thing, Dr. Johnson and Board. These plans, if they're approved, the district has the ability to transition into a different one based on different things happening with COVID and when things are detected or when things are better or when things are worse. So it was giving you the flexibility of saying, here are three plans, and do you agree with the plans? And then which one would you prefer based on your recommendation and your vote to say this is how Wittenwood City School should open on August 24th?
So if it's not out of order, I would like to hear that motion made again because I didn't hear that.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the plans for reopening of school as presented.
Yes.
Okay. And that satisfies what we need?
That's for, because you're talking about plans, not a plan.
Okay. I need another second, I suppose.
Second.
Okay. So at this time, Board, are there any questions with respect to Plan 1, 2, or 3? Blended, full-time, or virtual?
I, I think what I'm getting a sense, and Dr. Johnson, you can correct me, that at some point, we're going to have to decide which one of the three plans that we're moving forward with? Is that, where the, it seems like there's some hesitation.
Yes.
For my question, my hesitation is, I don't, I, I don't understand what we just, what, I, I thought we were voting to say we want to start school as virtual and have the flexibility to do, if two-thirds of the teachers are saying that they don't feel comfortable. If we vote plans plural, we have three plans in front of us. And this is just a question, this is our discussion point after the motion has been put on the floor. At what point do we decide if it's not now that it's virtual? Or that it's full-time? That, so that we can give our teachers some peace of mind. They know what their, what their expectation is. As a, as a professor myself, I want to know what I'm going to do come August the 24th. And so I guess that's the part that I just kind of want some clarification and some tweaking just for the sake of our teachers who we're, you know, who, who we depend on to, to service our, our students in the district. So we have three plans. The night we're voting on the
One of three.
possibility of any one of these three plans being implemented, which one are we starting with?
Yeah, I, I was under the impression now, we're, now that we put the motion in for the plan, now we're gonna go around and give each of our recommendations as which plan we're going, which, which plan we feel we should start with on August 24th.
That is correct, Mr. McAllan.
Okay, so starting with you, Mr. McAllan, let's hear, what say you?
Virtual, I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with, with the teacher, you know, how they feel. So I want to go with virtual only.
Okay, Mrs. Ruggles?
I'm in a camp of blended. Just because I think that we have to, if, if the, I'm in the plan for blended if, in fact, the social distancing and everything is up to speed. And it seems like it is up to speed as far as how do we social distance. I'm in the, work with a lot of schools and colleges and, you know. So I look at some plans are better than other. So I would be okay with a blended plan as long as we are making sure these babies are safe. Because I do believe virtually, our students are going to suffer. And it takes a whole lot of accountability in making sure that the students are not falling in the crack. So I'm, I'm okay with blended.
Okay. Mr. Birdy?
Yeah, I, I think at this point with the spike in the COVID-19 cases throughout the country and out of respect, I think for what the teachers have asked for, you know, my preference would be that we start with a virtual scenario. I, I mean, I, I don't like the fact that the children are not getting that face-to-face contact, but I think the risks at this point to both the teachers and the, and the, and the students is, and the other staff is, is significant enough that it makes sense to, to go virtual to start with.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Dr. Culetti?
I'm in favor of virtual for basically three reasons. The first is in deference to the call from the teachers. The second is we do not yet know about spread from students. We should, we will learn about that within the next few months. And the third is there's $100 billion in a bill in the Senate. And the third is, there's a hundred billion dollars in a bill in the Senate that will assist. Uh K through twelve students, and when that comes through, we'll be able to do a better job.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kupalaletti, um, I think that um, I um. I feel the sentiments of the instructors as being a, a professor myself. If two-thirds say that they're not comfortable, do we have the capacity to bring in substitutes at the rate of two-thirds? I don't think so, I think that um, is it the optimal first choice that we might want is for them to be virtual? Probably not, but I think that if we tighten our belt, i- it certainly is not going to be the learning experience that we had. In March, because we were just thrown in and we had to just kind of do the best we could, we sent home packages, we did this or that. But um, there is a way to build a virtual classroom and a uh, whi- which is structured. Which you could still have lecture, which you could still have assignments that are due at a certain time. And uh build that, that structure in, that's not to say that we will be virtual the whole school year. But um, I think with four-five-two-four-oh being our zip code. And Hamilton County being the place that we reside. And it being on the top of the list for the fastest growing rate of COVID cases. I, I feel like that we would, I mean, maybe other school districts aren't the hotspot that we are. But the hotspot that we are, I think that uh my opinion would be to start virtually. For the start of the year and to reassess as um, as numbers come out, as information comes out on. What, how the spread is from students to students, you know, the contact, um. I just, I, I, that would be my, my personal opinion and, and preference, we are, I mean, it, it would be to me um. Kind of like, how do you ignore that your zip code is the one that was called out from the governor that says this is the hotspot? Can you ignore that? I, I don't see how we can, four-five-two-four-oh is Wouldnwood City Schools' zip code. I don't think.
And, and.
Dr. Johnson, I think there's, I think, you know, this is just not an easy um. Uh, there's so many other things that go into things and, and into the decision. And I respect everybody's um decision and as you all know, the conversations that I, you know, I've had with you that. You know, I'm, I'm an individual that is at risk um based on my health. But my question is, and it has always been and will always be. Where has four-five-two-four-oh flattened? Or is it on the rise? And you know, I've been watching um and granted, um, I could be wrong, but are we? Have we flattened in four-five-two-four-oh? And Hamilton County Commissioners do um an update. I'm not so sure if the superintendents are involved with that, but I know the mayor of Forest Park, we had a conversation. Um, about, you know, the difficulties in, in making this decision and definitely was like, face-to-face is not. An option given these, this information. So my question is, at one point, it seemed like the numbers that was four-five-two-four-oh and four-five. Um, two-three-one had um become steady, I could be wrong. Um, but we also need to, whatever the plan it is that we're going to do, we need to be able to pivot. Quickly, um, you know, to make sure that like if we do go all the way virtual, which it looks like everybody's in um agreement for virtual. How do we do, I don't know, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't. Know what the best answer is, I think about the parents um who have been reaching out about having to. Still work and, and um I've looked at what Mr. Smith and his team has put together as far as, you know, trying to social distance the children and trying to. Uh make sure that the buildings are clean, um, I think about the whole situation and how. What the impact of the families um that may need, don't, that don't have daycare, that do not have individuals at home to be able to provide. Oversight of the children's um education and I also think about. You know, if we have some grandparents who are taking care of kids, you know, how do we expose them? So I'm just trying to find the best way to accommodate, not just. You know, there's so many people who are affected by this, which is, which are the teachers, which are the children, which is the home, which is the community. It, it's a tough um place to be, so.
Well, the other, yeah, uh, uh, Ms. Ruggles and, and Board, uh, the county commissioner. Uh, the, the CDC has, has been very cautious about using zip code as the way to balance COVID or to say that there are hotspots because. Zip codes don't really have a definitive as far as people are traveling around through the city. Uh, they're saying to use something more definitive like a, uh, like Hamilton County, Warren County, Butler County. The other part is, if Mrs. Denny is still on the line. I'd like for her to give you, I know we heard from the teachers and they gave a number of two-thirds. But I think we need to hear, what did our parents say? What did they say about school and their children and the opportunities to have their children educated? And I think that it would behoove us not to hear some data from them so that we could have a more uh informed uh opportunity to hear. What other people think, so Mrs. Denny, are you still there?
I am, Mr. Smith, and I will definitely pull up the survey right now. Um, actually, no, we did take, send out two surveys. And the difference between the first one and the second one were somewhat dramatic as far as how our community felt. Um, on the second one, if uh, if we look at how comfortable our families are with sending their, their children back into facilities. Um. We are looking at fifty percent of our parents saying that they are hesitant and concerned. Only nineteen percent feel relatively comfortable. And thirty percent said that they will not send their child to school until there's a vaccine and/or treatment. And then um, you see the concerns raised with, in regards to putting them on a bus.
Um, yeah, I, 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 I know, you know, I was the first person to vote and I just kind of said virtual. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands, I mean, I, I, this is a crazy, crazy situation. Um, if, if, if everything was different, I mean, initially, I really wanted the blended plan because I think the kids need to be somewhere, but. Um, as you guys know, I coached baseball at the high school level and also during the summer. And with the Reds organization, we were at the forefront of not letting my, our kids get out there until. We were sure we could keep them safe with masks and, and disinfectant and social distancing. And I got to tell you, we're now into, we've played thirty games and my team is the only one doing any of that. No other team, we've been all over the place and, I mean, from the, the parents in the stands. To the other, other teams, I mean, where I've got my kids out there in lawn chairs right outside, so we only have so many kids in the dugout. And there has been no other team that has done that, so I don't feel comfortable. That people are going to social distance and it's not so much in the school. I mean, we might be perfect in what we're doing in the school, but the challenge is, is what about when they leave school? And see, I know how the Reds were saying, we got to do this and we're doing all those things, but. In the two and a half hours when the baseball game is over, those kids are going wherever. And I just don't feel comfortable with that for our children, our teachers, our administrators, our families. And I know it's going to be a hardship, a hard ten for the families trying to find daycare, I get that and hopefully. What Dr. Kupalaletti was talking about, you know, what's in Congress now will maybe help our, our, our parents. Figure out a way to do that, but it's just too many unknown for me to feel comfortable. Like I said, ideally, I, initially, I wanted to go with the blended, but with everything's happening and I live in thirty-one, four-five-two-three-one and. I'm not sure that the numbers are going down or even if they are flat, um, you know. I, I think the teachers, I think, I think the teachers want to be there, the kids want to be there. But I think it's our responsibility to try to make sure everybody is as safe as possible.
And I think, I think, McGowan, the other part that you mentioned, that was the purpose of having the word plural in plan. So that there is some flexibility that if things change, the district has the ability to transition. You know, I could have said to the team, hey, let's work on one plan, let's work on a virtual plan, because that's what we believe the staff and the students may need. But I think in order to be comprehensive, it was important to have more than one, so that if things change, we. I don't want to go back to a team and say, alright, things change, let's create a new plan, that's not fair to the center. It's not fair to the families, nor is it fair to the children, nor to the staff. So I wanted to make sure that the board knew that there was a, a picture of what things could look like from three different dimensions. In the event that things change along the way, and it gives us actually some, some buying time and some uh speed to move. To be nimble to move into any, any one of these plans based on what the needs are.
And, and I have to say that I, I think I was a little confused with the process, you know, I. I understood our process to be similar to what Mr. um Smith said. Um, you know, when I looked at the motions that we would approve the plans. And then we would come back and we would have some opportunity to talk about it, so. To be able to say, okay, well, what do you want? And looking at how things are changing um today, it, it might, tomorrow, it might be. Who knows, or in a week, it might be face-to-face, it might be virtual, um, but. Because we're still. Trying to figure out what's best to do and to uh Ms. Baker's point, I am the type of person that I need to know what I'm going to do. I need to know what I'm going to do with my children, I need to um figure, figure out what is the best thing so that I can go to work and be productive. But you know, when we say, okay, what do you want to do right now? I mean, have we had any real discussion to um talk about, you know? What is really the best based on, you know, Ms. Baker's um position, is what Ms. Denny just shared with us? What is the best thing, I don't think we have had a full discussion on it, I think it kind of was. Put on us to say what you want right now. So, and I, I know that's what the um Board, the Board meetings are for. Um, but you know, I, I'd like to hear and understand what with the plan. To keep individuals safe, um, do, do people not feel comfortable in the plan of a blended that. We're going to social distance, just to be able to social distance the students. And keep the buildings clean so that they do not feel that we're going to do that. And do, if we're going to a virtual situation, we already know that we've heard from parents and say, I haven't heard from teachers. Um, so are the teachers going to come into the school, I mean, how do we make sure that there is a level of um. Fidelity in serving our children's, whether it's blended, virtual, and I'm just not on face-to-face, that's. You know, how, how do we make sure that there's some level of accountability, wha- whatever it is that we decide to do?
Mrs. Denny, can you give the Board, uh, when we, we, in the survey, the teacher, uh, actually, it's not just teachers, staff. So in the staff survey, can you give the Board the numeric value of, in the pie graph? What uh the, what the percentage was when we said that. Uh, staff would report, even if they're in a virtual situation, staff was, would report, what was that number? That the staff agreed to it?
Okay, let's look.
So there's the other step, Dr. Johnson and Board, that um, when I said that. The plan is different than it was before, remember, everybody was virtual when it first happened. But uh, the staff actually had a number, I believe it was like eighty-two point five, something like that, what was the number, Ms. Denny?
Uh, right now, it's at seventy-nine point four.
Seventy-nine point four, okay.
And that is, I will be able to perform my teacher responsibilities virtually for my students while on school campus, is that what you're asking for, Dr. Dennis Smith?
Which is uh rounded up to eighty percent, right?
Correct.
What is that number, what is that percentage related to?
That they would be able to come to the campus to perform their responsibilities while the kids are virtual. That's the level of comfort that the teachers, and, and I, again, I apologize, I don't mean teachers, I mean the staff. That, that's the level of comfort that they agree that they would be, it would be eighty percent would say that I would be comfortable. Coming to perform my duties on-site as opposed to being at another location.
Um, Mrs. Denny, could I ask one other question, uh, you were talking about the surveys and I thought you said the first survey. Numbers, but I didn't hear the second survey numbers, did I? Did you give the second survey of numbers? Because the first survey of numbers, I had fifty percent were hesitant, nineteen percent were comfortable, thirty percent. Said they did not want to send and they were not comfortable with the busing, so what?
Second survey, that's the, the, she's quoting the second survey. Because the thing that we did, uh, we knew that because of the ever-changing issues around COVID. Our data was already skewed because we had data from several weeks ago and I challenged. Denny and her team to get updated the most recent survey so that it could make, make sense. As opposed to giving the Board old data.
Well, that was the second survey then.
Dr. Johnson, yeah, I might have confused you a little bit, so we had sent an, uh, the original parent survey. Um, about two weeks before this roughly. Um, and that's what I was referring to when I said there was a definitely a, a shift, a difference in the data that came back from that, so. Is that, was that your question?
That was my question, I was looking to compare what the first one was to the second one, but this is the second one and that's really what's important, yeah.
Correct, correct, I didn't, I didn't, um, I didn't have the first one up.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
And Mrs. Denny, you, with these numbers, um, this is just for the students, how parents felt about sending their. Children to school, I think the first survey, you talked about um busing. Did you do a second survey on busing?
Yes, yes, actually, the, the question was the same, I just narrowed down um how many options there were so that we could really hone in on exactly. Um, how people felt about it, so it just gave three options for, actually, one was not apt, applicable for um busing. So the busing on the second survey, um, Ms. Ruggles was, this is the question, so I'll read it just so we have it in context. Um, how comfortable are you with sending your child on a school bus every day this fall? If the recommendation, um, if all of the recommend, recommended health and safety measures such as social distancing are in place. And that would be fifteen percent relatively comfortable. Thirty-one.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Okay.
Relatively comfortable, thirty-eight, thirty-one point eight is hesitant and concerned. Thirty-three point six, I will not send my child to school on a school bus until there's a vaccine and/or treatment. And then um almost twenty percent was non-applicable, which is our high school students.
So that's the parents and the, and the teachers.
So this is.
Yeah, this is the parents, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of the teachers' comfortability and then the second survey. Um, it seems like the comfort level went down.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And as more information came out based on zip codes, uh, county spikes, events that took place. We anticipated that the counts would change, but again, we wanted to give you the most current, relevant data. So that the data wouldn't be skewed, otherwise, if we gave you data from a survey two weeks ago, the data would be flawed, it wouldn't be any good. For the Board to use to make a informative decision.
I, 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 I think even as we're looking at the data, the thing that. I, 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 I think even as we're looking at the data, the thing that, the, the challenge or the concerns I have is that I think we'd have a better chance of social distancing and doing what we need to do at the high school level than we did at the elementary school level. I just can't imagine those kids keeping masks on and, and all that other stuff. So I think we'd have a better opportunity to do a blended learning at the high school level. Maybe even the middle school, but at the elementary school, I just don't see how that would work. And I do think that the elementary kids are the ones that need to be, you know, at school, in front of their teacher, but, you know.
That's a good point, that's a good point.
If you create that environment, then when you start talking about, uh, younger and older siblings actually modifying and watching kids, that's
Yeah.
formula.
Yeah, that's another thing to consider, right? Because you can't send some and some others.
I, I can tell you guys that the team, that you, again, uh, regardless of what plan was selected, I just wanted to make sure that you guys know that you have an incredible, uh, group of professionals that worked diligently on all of those plans to make sure, because they had the customer in mind. And the customer conversation fluctuates based on who's the customer at the time. Is it the parent customer? Customer, is it the staff customer? Is it the paraprofessional customer? Is it the bus driver? Is it the food services, is it the child? Who is the customer? And for them to take a comprehensive plan and put all the variables in place, it took a lot of work and a lot of strategy. So, uh, I'd like to commend the team for putting a lot of time and energy into it. And they will do the best with any plan that the board has approved, because that's our mission to children in our district.
So what, what, oh, go ahead, Jeff.
We, we, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear from Mr. Smith. So Mr. Smith, what, what is your recommendation? What do you want to have happen?
I want COVID to go away, that's the first thing, all right?
Yeah, there's a lot of us that want that.
Now what?
I want to be six-four.
Me too.
With an Afro.
With an Afro.
Got that.
You know, again, I, I sent you guys some information. First of all, there's no perfect answer to this storm, all right? It's staring us in the face. And when you look at other schools in our community, uh, other school districts, they're all over the place. They've got a face-to-face, two days and something else the next day, and it's kind of weird and interesting. But the one thing that I'd want us to consider is, uh, what does this mean for our community as it relates to, and I think Dr. Kupuleti made a point, that when things begin to change, then we can make some adjustments along the way. The question is, what is that numeric value of things changing? Meaning, go to yellow, does yellow give us some support? Because when you look at the three, the, the major numbers, red is where we are living. And there's a hands-down conversation with all superintendents that if we go into purple, there is no reason to have a board vote on anything, because this is a virtual life that we're living. However, I think one of the things that we have to consider, that when districts around us do something different, what does it tell our, our community about who we are and what we value as it relates to, to education? Okay, uh, so I appreciate the surveys, I appreciate the time and energy. Uh, I could, I, I am to do the part that I'm supposed to do as a superintendent to make sure that there is a robust virtual experience for children, a blended virtual experience for the children and a face-to-face, whatever the case may be. So, and, and/or maximize instructional strategies. I do know for a fact that a virtual experience will not get us to where we need to be as far as educating our youth. However, it may get us closer than nothing at all. Because if the kids are saying, I'm not coming, nobody's, I'm not going to work on the Chromebooks, I'm not gonna do any of it. Then remember, even though you have three plans, there is a fourth plan. Where the parents say, we're doing nothing and our kids are doing nothing. So there is a fourth plan that we have no control over. But what I don't want to do, remember, the board has given us a provision that I really appreciate, where they gave us, you guys gave us another additional week to put in all types of, uh, opportunities for staff and students to appreciate whatever experience we're gonna have. Some school district in Ohio is going to start school on August tenth. I am going to be watching very carefully to see how they operate. There is going to be a school in Ohio that will start the week after. I am going to be very careful to see how they operate. We're not into the twenty-fourth. There will be people jumping out two weeks before we are. Will that create spikes? And what will the community say about the opportunity that kids have?
Yeah, yeah, and I just have a quick question for, yeah, um, so in the survey, Ms. Denny, um, when you say you surveyed the teachers, did you survey Opsy? Um, bus drivers and, and other staff to find out how, how they felt?
So, um, the, the survey went out as a Wintonall, so if you have a Wintonwoods.org address, um, then you were able to log in some, and some people were having issues. Um, and we correct, I, I was able to correct, I believe, everyone and allow them, um, to have access to the survey. So yes, to answer your question, if you're an employee, you have a Wintonwoods.org address and you received that email. And also for clarification, I don't know if I mentioned, but the responses for the parent survey, we received over thirteen hundred. It was, um, one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine, which is a very good response to a survey, um, from my experience. And then for the staff survey, um, I know it was over three hundred, it was three hundred and forty-three. Um, and I don't know, Ms., I, I don't know the exact numbers on our staff, I believe it's over four hundred, uh, from memory. Um, so I think that's a really good turnaround as well.
So can I say something here? Madam President?
Yes, please, Dr. Kupuleti.
So, from the President of the United States to the Governor, to everyone else, I have been told that the School Board is responsible for making the decision. Now, I take that responsibility very, uh, to my heart. Uh, in fact, I take it to my bed. I take it virtually all day long, feeding, learning new information to help me make my decision. So I did not make my decision lightly. Uh, I'm sure none of you did. Uh, but I, I would like to assure the rest of the board and anyone who's listening that all of us have thought through this very carefully. Because the ultimate responsibility is on the, the School Board. And whatever happens, it's our responsibility. If it's good, it's a good thing, if it's bad, it's a bad thing. So I, I just want everyone to know that we're all taking this very seriously.
Thank you, um.
I, I, and I know, and last thing I want to say is, I, I do appreciate, uh, Ms. Baker, also Ms. Ferguson Gordon, for your input, this, this is all extremely important. Ms. Denny, um, I think the biggest thing, though, is what Mrs. Ruggler said earlier. And I love this School Board, I love this administration, because you have set it up where we can pivot, as, uh, Mrs. Ruggler said. So if things get better and the teachers feel comfortable and we as a board feel comfortable that we can go to a blended learning, you've set it up and you've got it in place so we can do that fairly quickly. So I think that's the key. I think everybody on this phone call feels that we want the kids in front of the teachers, the teachers want to be in front of the kids. And as it gets to that point, because eventually it will get to that point, we're gonna be able to do it in a fairly quickly manner.
So, so am I to understand this, that if there's a virtual situation, the teachers will report to the school?
Madam Vice President, if there is a virtual situation, the staff will report.
The staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Regular hours?
Yes. Because the thing that we've already figured out, uh, Mr. Denny and I have already gone to buildings and we can create that six-foot distancing with, without any problems. And possibly ten feet, depending on what we need.
We just, you would just have to make sure that the bathrooms are serviced regularly or something, so that.
Part of the plan, Dr. Johnson.
Okay, all right. With that being said, I think that we've had a very, uh, robust, uh, discussion around this issue. Thank you, Mrs. Denny, uh, Mr. Smith and Board for, uh, all your input. And as Dr. Kupuleti said, none of us take this decision lightly. We want to, uh, make the best decision for, um, for the students of the district and for the, um, teachers and staff who have to, uh, come to work in this district. Um, so we want to make the best decision for all the stakeholders, uh, and that the parents are comfortable as well. So we appreciate the work, Mrs. Denny, that you've done with the surveys. Because that gives us information that we can kind of go on, uh, as we make this decision. But I think, uh, we've heard enough, uh, discussion around this. And, uh, if there's no other discussion at this point, Mr. Seymour, I'd like for you to call the vote. And just as a reminder, we are voting on, um, the plans for reopening the schools as presented, the three plans.
Okay, Mr. McGowan?
Um, yes, virtual.
Well, it's I or you?
Oh. Oh. Okay, say that, I'm sorry. I.
Mrs. Ruggles?
I.
Mr. Verdi?
I.
Dr. Kupuleti?
You're on mute, Dr. Kupuleti.
Dr. Kupuleti?
I.
Dr. Johnson?
I. That vote for agenda item ten point oh four, the plans for reopening school, passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh five, which is the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Code of Conduct. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, there are no changes to the Code of Conduct. The only thing that, um, we're going to work with our legal department to insert later, uh, depending on if we, uh, come back to school at any time in the near future, there would have to be some, uh, conversation as it relates to mask and social distancing. We would have to put something in the Code of Conduct when teach, when kids intentionally violate those rules. What we would actually do is a recommendation, okay? So other than that, the recommendations to approve their, the, um, Code of Conduct as presented.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order to approve the Code of Conduct.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Code of Conduct as presented.
Second?
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Um, are there any questions for discussion? I just have one, one statement or question, Mr. Smith. In the event that when school does take up, then we would just, you would just bring this back to us as an agenda item, as an amended amendment to the Code of Conduct?
Yes.
To the mask.
Absolutely, we're gonna actually, I've already asked legal to, uh, make a, um, an assessment in the administrative guidelines of how administrators would handle situations if in, in the event that, uh, school resumes and we were in, giving kids clear instructions about how they're to perform and how they're going to create a social atmosphere in the buildings. And if some kid or any, any, any student would decide to just intentionally violate that, then there would have to be some agreements from the board of what actions we would take.
Okay, thank you very much, um, Mr. Smith. Um, okay, if there are no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote? You're on mute, Mr. Smith.
Mr. McGowan?
I.
Mrs. Ruggles?
I.
Mr. Verdi?
I.
Dr. Kupuleti?
I.
Dr. Johnson?
I, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is, uh, ten point oh six, which is the, uh, change orders. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, um, based on these design alternates, um, any, remember, any order that goes over the fifty thousand dollars would require the Board of Education's approval. So we're bringing the change orders for the K-six and there's one for the K-six, which is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine fifty-three. There is a seven-twelve alternate arena acoustical wall panels of fifty-two thousand oh forty-one. There is an alternate, uh, for the middle school gym, acoustical wall panels of sixty-two thousand two thirteen twenty-four. And finally, there's a high school celestry acoustical wall panels of fifty-five thousand seven fifty-nine.
Thank you, um, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I, do I have a question, do I wait until after?
Yeah, let's make the, get the motion on the floor and then we can have the discussion and questions.
Got it.
I'll make a motion to approve the change orders as presented.
Second?
It's been motioned and seconded. Now, Mr. McGowan, if you have questions, uh, now is the time.
Sure, um, and, and I, I guess when I look at the playground and basketball goals, you know, almost two hundred thousand dollars. Did we like have to get a lot more or did we just change something in midstream?
Mr. Denny's still on the line, he may be able to answer that.
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to answer that question. So this, along with quite a few other alternates, were actually sort of temporarily, let me say, set to the side. Um, when we were at GMP, um, as the Board may, may recall, we were very close to budget, we were very close to, to GMP and then the steel tariffs came in, cost us about a million dollars per project. We also had some soil issues that were resolved with, uh, geopiers and some other mitigations, um, liming the soil and things like that for, uh, stability. And that cost us another, almost half a million per project. So between those types of, um, outside factors, we, uh, as the project team, uh, really worked to set aside some alternates for later. So the risk at the beginning of the project is greatest and as you proceed along, the risk mitigates. So we're probably approaching the two-thirds mark to the seventy percent complete mark now. We're out of the ground, we're, you know, the, the structure's in place, the roof is over top of everything, you've really got a lot of risk managed. So now is the time where we can start going back and looking at those things that were value engineered out of the project and set to the side. To be quite transparent, we can't operate a K-six school without a playground, playsets for the children to enjoy, um, play equipment, fall protection, uh, the sidewalks to go with that. Um, and, and then the basketball goals are sort of a bonus and that includes the striping as well, um, for the bus turnaround, which can be closed off with gates for safety during the day. And that provides the, uh, students with another play area, especially when it's wet. You know, the young kids won't get, uh, as muddy and so forth. So all that to say, um, it, it was a little bit of both, uh, if I could say so. Um, to your question, Mr. McGowan's, it, it was definitely in the project and it's set aside with the hope that we could buy it later if the project went smoothly. Um, I'm very thankful and I think we would all say we feel blessed that it has gone smoothly. And we're in a position now to, um, as the owner, uh, with the state, who's the co-owner, step in and say, it's time for us to be able to purchase some of these. I hope that helps.
Yeah, um, I, I'd like to add one thing. When we talk about the acoustical walls, one of the things that, uh, we wanted to make sure that we did in these large buildings is we wanted to be able to have more than one activity taking place at the same time, without any kind of interference. These acoustical walls and acoustical panels gives us the luxury of doing it. But you guys know, you're smart, once these walls come up, trying to put acoustical panels in, it, it's a bust, you won't be able to do it. So we have to do it while the building is actually being born. And then we have a better way of putting it in where it actually can do what we need it to do.
Right, and, and I, I was really just referencing the playground, play equipment and basketball goals, but that, uh, Mr. Denny, that, that makes total sense. But that, Mr. Denny, that, that makes total sense. I, I just didn't know if it was like, okay, all of a sudden, this is in addition to what we were already doing. But, you know, the kid's safety obviously is, is very important. And I totally have faith in you and I, I'm familiar with Megan, with, you know, some of the construction people. So, you know, that, that totally answered my question, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, it's a good question, appreciate that.
My, my statement was going to be, Mr. Denny, if, just to remind the board a, about the alternatives and how we, you know, the team made the decision to set aside certain things until we got to this point in the project. And I think you kind of touched on that a little bit, but there were a lot of things that we had talked about early on that were going to be pushed, you know, not pushed off, but put aside so that we could do the essentials. And then once construction was at a certain point, they could start bringing those things back on board. So, I mean, you probably have a better way of explaining it than what I just did, but.
Yeah, that's the question I was gonna ask, I believe it was the, one of the things because of our choir and our music program when we heard that it was gonna have to be put, you know, aside.
You're right.
Later, so the, the budget and the things, okay.
And just, Dr. Johnson, I thought you said it very well, better, better than I did. And that's exactly what, what's happening is the risk is really being managed now. We're not as worried about unforeseen circumstances, I mean, that's always a concern. But as the project goes along, the risk just reduces exponentially as you near completion. And so we're getting to a good spot in the project where, you know, we're, I'm very conservative, Mr. Smith is very conservative. Our project manager from the state is very conservative. You alluded to Megan, Evans, Don Quayle and his team and Skanska. Very good stewards of the dollars, they realize we're working with, with public sector dollars. These are taxpayer funds that have to be safeguarded and, and really, everything we do needs to be done transparently. So that's really a lot of what you're saying here.
Mr. Denny, I have one other clarifying question. Based on the Ohio Facilities Commission, are, are you allowed to open a school without a playground?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the Ohio School Design Manual requires that we would have to have some form of playground and play equipment. Yes, thank you, it's a great point.
Yeah, okay, very good. That, the, the change orders are in front of us, we, there, there are attachment in Board docs. If you didn't print them out, you can go back and look at them for the amounts and, and what's going on with each one of those amounts. So if there are no other questions or discussion re, around that, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. McGowan?
I.
Mrs. Rugless?
I.
Mr. Birdy?
I.
Dr. Culetti?
I.
Dr. Johnson?
I, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is 10.07. Which is the retirement of the mascot Native American chieftain. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, I sent you recent information dated July 13, 2020 of what the 500 tribes, Native American tribes, wanted the public to understand about the word mascot. They were very clear that their caricature is not a mascot and they wanted to move the nation in a different direction. And one of the things they, they recommended is if you use a, any kind of caricature of a Native American that you would move, remove that mascot from any paraphernalia or any activity that you may have. So this was dated July 13, 2020, the most recent conversation that was had by the National Council of American Indians. And I sent you guys that information so that you would be aware of it. That they mentioned the mascot being a caricature of a Native American. So the recommendation is to retire the Wittenwood City School District mascot of the Native American chieftain.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the retirement of the Wittenwood City School District mascot of the Native American chieftain.
A second?
It's been motioned and seconded, are there any questions or discussion?
Thank you. I thought that was very appropriate and very, very, very much needed.
It's overdue.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Rugless, you had something?
I just said it's overdue.
Yes, thank you. All right, having no other discussion at this time, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. McGowan?
I.
Mrs. Rugless?
I.
Mr. Birdy?
I.
Dr. Culetti?
I.
Dr. Johnson?
I, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 11.01, which is Board of Education Reports and Legislative Report. I've been sending things out as Mr. Smith has been sending them to me. Many times, Mr. Smith has been putting us all on and sending us the different updates. What's foremost in everybody's mind with regards to legislation, of course, is what is your plan for going back to school? What's going on with COVID-19 in your area? What are you doing to keep kids safe, you know, from, from, and, and, and how, from, from COVID? And, and, and what's your plan? So you, that's all been on our agenda today. The other item was the, the talk of the mascots. We have several schools, districts that have mascots. We had that on our agenda and we, we talked about in our board session, we just voted that. So legislatively, that's what's been on the front of everybody's mind. The superintendents across the state of Ohio are all looking to see what governor is going to do and say so that, you know, they can make their decisions. But as Superintendent Smith said, for the most part, some are waiting to see these schools who are starting early face to face. And, you know, I think we, we did the right thing in voting up our plans. We have three plans and we'll implement the best one that goes with the situation. So that's all I've got for the legislative update. Mr. Smith, do you have anything that you'd like to share?
Yes, I have two things that are just really just burning to just jump out. Number one, we have been working on project-based learning for several years. And I am absolutely so proud to welcome Hannah Van Dyke, who is a student that was in the original class of the Academy of Global Studies. She is a graduate now of the university and she is coming back to be part of our PBL experience. And so one of the things that we always wanted to do through our HR department was how to bring our kids who have this great robust experience of PBL in order to help them move our process along. So congrats to Hannah Van Dyke. And finally, I think that it would be fitting if the board president would be able to tell the public which plan we are going to move with. Because I think they may be a little confused about, is it going to be the virtual plan? The blended plan or the return to school? They really are looking for a definitive.
If you would like for me to say that right here, right now? I say that, that's where I was kind of going when we had the discussion. But I think that what Wittenwood City School is going to start with on August the 24th is a virtual plan. And the, our, our administrators and our executive team has been working tirelessly to come up with special training and implementation, ways of implementing this. This has been on our radar since March. Since we went out, Superintendent and I began to discuss this, you know, what is this gonna look like in the fall? So this is not something that was a knee jerk thing. Our students were already ready with technology. We already had one-on-one, you know, devices for our kids before. You know, it's nice, we've got the CARES Act to update some of our technology. But we already had that going on before, you know, COVID came, came along. So as for the Wittenwood City School District, we're going to start on August the 24th with a virtual plan in place. And that we have, we as a board have left it open to have other plans as we get instruction from the governor and as we see this whole thing evolve. Whether it's going to evolve to flatline or to begin to drop. But that is what we are going to start with as a board. So I think that the, the data says that. For parents, the data says that for our teachers and our staff. So I think that we can't ignore the data and just run off and say, well, this is what I want. Why do you want that? You know, so we have to be, we have to be wise in our decision and heed the wise counsel of those individuals that we are, we aim to serve. So, Mr. Smith, that would be my assessment at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Johnson. I think that people are going to feel some sense of they know what direction the district is moving in. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is 11.02, our Great Oaks Career Technical Center. And we thank Mr. Birdy for doing this for several years for us. Mr. Birdy, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, I sent everybody an email this morning with a bunch of documents attached to it. So I'm not gonna go through all of it. There's a board highlights document that kind of covers the, the high level things that were discussed. There's a PDF file with a Great Oaks communication plan as far as what they were working on. And then there's a couple of other documents as far as Mr. Snyder's weekly updates that he provides. And then Nine Ways Online Teaching should be different than face-to-face teaching, which is a document Harry sent out to, to all the board members. And I think that, as was said before, because, you know, we were doing the PBL, we had the technology out there with our children, that there's a lot of that that's, that's already been covered by our, our administration and our staff. So, and that's my report.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Birdy.
Mr. Birdy? Would you let Mr. Snyder know, and I've sent him an email. The course catalog that they're using for Scarlet feels like a university catalog. It is a very comprehensive catalog about the offerings in Scarlet. So I think they, I mean, in the Oaks, so I think they've done an incredible job on that.
I will pass that on, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, thank you, Mr. Birdy. The next item on the agenda is 12.01, which is Board Motions Recommendations. And Board, as far as I know, we don't have any open motions or recommendations that need to be discussed at this time. Does anybody have anything that they want to bring forward at this point? Okay, therefore, we will move right on to our next item on the agenda, which is 1301, which is comments from the Board of Education Superintendent and the Treasurer. And Mr. McGowan, if you don't mind going first for us with.
Not at all. First of all, I want to thank the board again for the other people on the line that don't know. I lost my mother yesterday and all the boards sent me flowers. I've got phone calls and texts from everybody and I really appreciate that. But I know how important today was. And I know my mom, as a longtime resident of Springfield Township, would have told me to have my butt on this call to make sure I'm involved in, in these extremely, extremely important decisions for our youth. So thank you guys for your condolences. And thank you teachers and administrators and staff and everybody that's on for, you know, chiming in on, on these important decisions. And, you know, all I can do is, is just pray and pray that this will pass and we'll be all in front of each other real soon. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan, Dr. Culetti?
All right, let's see. So I gave my condolences to Mr. McGowan's. I wanted to thank Mr. Smith and his teams for the excellent job they did in giving us contingency plans and plans for education. There's a lot of work there, details upon details upon details, reaching out to virtually every resource. So I really think, I would personally like to thank his team and Mr. Smith. But I think the community should know that it has been done in a very thorough way. And the second thing I would like to say is the retirement of the mascot is something that is extremely important. The tribes and the NAACP and the Ameri, have both come out very strongly to retire such mascots. And the American Association of Psychology has said that such mascots are very damaging to Native American youth. So I think the step that was taken is very important.
Thank you, Dr. Culetti, thank you. Mr. Birdy?
You know, like I said, Gino, I know it's a difficult time for you. So again, our condolences are with you and thoughts and prayers with you and your family at this time. I think it's great to hear about Hannah Van Dyke coming back to, to the district to help out with the PBL. I believe she was a former Valley Victorian of our school district. You know, for the teachers and Opsy staff, there really isn't a good answer as far as bringing the students back. I don't think, you know, the three plans are, are the best we've got right now. Virtual seems to be the right answer at this moment. And I like the fact that we've got the ability to, to pivot and make a change if we need to at some point in your, near future. So again, you know, thank you to Mr. Mr. Seymour, the teachers, the Opsy staff for, for all that they do. And I'm assuming that Mr. Smith will be putting out a communication as to what's gonna happen for all of them very, very quickly. So thank you guys for everything you do.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy, Mrs. Rugless?
Yeah, I'll just keep mine short. I think, you know, I want to thank Opsy and the teachers associations for their communications as it relates to trying to get back to work and trying to do what's right for our children. And I'm with Mr. Birdy, there's no easy answer to the plan to get back to school. But trying to work together collectively across the administration, the teachers, the, the staff and just really understanding how do we best serve these students? And how do we feel confident that they're, that we can, whatever the plan is that there's, we minimize the learning loss for our children. We'll, we have some challenging days ahead of us in making sure that there's shared accountability and making sure that the kid, the children are educated and we're listening to each other. And so, I mean, we just gotta keep working. And, you know, I like the fact, the idea of plans that provides us the ability to pivot based on the best need, based on the data and the best needs for our families and community.
Thank you, Mrs. Rugless. Mr. Seymour? Mr. Smith, you're on mute.
Mr. Smith, you're on mute.
Mr. Seymour?
Just a reminder, I sent you a questionnaire from our auditors. If you could please complete that and send it back, I would appreciate it. And if you need me to send it again, just email me and I'll be glad to forward it to you again. But we're doing our audit remotely, so your, your email back to me is your signature. Thank you.
All right, Board, so does every, does everybody remember getting that email from Mr. Seymour? If not, just send it to him and he'll send it to you again. I remember getting it, I don't know what day it was on, but yeah, we, we need to get that back to him as soon as possible. Is there a deadline for that, Mr. Seymour?
It, it just helps speed along the process of the audit.
Okay, so I still. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I have one final piece, Dr. Johnson and Board. First of all, thank you guys for taking the time to read a lot of information about the plans. We tried to make them comprehensive by putting in a table of contents, a page number so you can refer back to them as easily and as quickly as you need it to. And then the final piece, I would. And then the final piece, I would like, because you hear a lot in the community, we're gonna keep our ears and our eyes open. I'm, I'm, I would like for us to consider that we may get some conversations from parents about the decision that was made tonight. And let's just keep our minds open about what our parents say about this experience called virtual or whatever plan that was selected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The only thing that I, I have sort of to echo what some others have said, I do thank you, Mr. McGowan's, for coming in and, and helping us out with the decisions that we had to make tonight under the very difficult circumstances that you were dealing with personally. We really do appreciate that. And to Opsy and to WWTA, we appreciate your being willing to ratify your contract. You are important to us. We want you to know that you're important to us and we don't take you for granted, you know? There's no small I's or little u's. We all are in this together. And the only way that it works is if everybody does their part. And we do appreciate that you are, are, are the representatives and that you could take our voice, this board's voice, back to your constituents and say, this is a board that cares, because we do care and we want everyone to remain safe. We want the people who come in to teach our kids to be safe. And we want the kids, the parents to know that their kids are in a safe environment. And I think that everybody wants the same thing. So, just thank you for ratifying the contract, helping us up on the financial end of it, because we did lose some money from the state. Mr. Smith, you have something?
Dr. Johnson, one, one last piece. I would be remiss without mentioning, the teachers' association did ratify their contract as well.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it. We really, really do appreciate it. The last thing that I want to say just to my board colleagues is that I had said that I would be having a knee replacement by the end of July. It is going to be the first week in August. So, Mrs. Rugless, you and I'll have to get together and do some things together. But I will be out for a few weeks dealing with that. It is on August the 6th. So, just so that you know, there's not like anything is gonna stop. But I just want everybody to know that my heart will still be with you, but I won't be probably in the state of mind to maybe help with decisions or whatever. So, I just wanted to say that. So, anybody else? Anybody has anything else to say at this point? Too, that we've had Mrs. Martin and Dr. Ragland on the line. We appreciate your being here tonight for our meeting. Mrs. Wilson, we appreciate you being here as well to help us through some of the issues that we were discussing. Mr. Denny and Mrs. Denny as well, we appreciate you. Dr. Culetti, did you have your hand? Do you know, needed to say something else? Are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Board, there is not a need to go into, 14.01 is an executive session. There's not a need to go into an additional executive session at this time. Therefore, I would sincerely like to thank the Waycross Services for videotaping tonight's regular board meeting. This moves us to Agenda Item 15.01, which is the closing of the Wintonwood City School Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, July the 27th, 2020. This meeting, thank you and take care of yourself and your loved ones. Stay safe, healthy and well. Have a good evening and the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.